Welcome to FBB's Meet the Candidates. This Cable 10 series allows you, the voter, to get a closer look at our candidates and the issues that are important to us in this community. This is all leading up to the general election where early voting starts on October 13th and goes until Election Day on November 3rd. For our interviews, we took questions from the community via social media and email. So we're going to talk about the shakeup in city government, how COVID is affecting our community, and confronting social injustice on a local level, and much more. So let's jump right in. Today's guest is Lisa Unger, and she is a candidate for City Commission. Hey Lisa, how are you?
Hey, I'm doing well. How are you doing today?
Awesome, I'm great. Well, as I said, we have a lot to talk about, so let's jump right in. For those who are just meeting you today, maybe they didn't see our previous interviews, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are running for City Commission?
Sure. So, like you said, my name's Lisa Unger, lifelong resident in Frankfurt, very active in the community. And basically, you know, I decided to run for City Commission because I felt like my voice wasn't being heard with the current elected officials, as well as, you know, I felt like they weren't representing me and a lot of people I know. So, you know, being real active in the community as the president of the Frankfurt Striders, which is a local running group, a lot of people know me because I, pre-COVID, I hosted a lot of free running groups, free training programs, trying to promote, you know, health and wellness. And so that led to me getting to know a lot of my community, and, you know, hearing what they wanted from our city and our elected officials, and what they liked and disliked. And so, you know, I decided I was just ready to get involved and took the plunge, and why not just be one of those city commissioners if I want change? So here I am.
So why don't you tell us about, in addition to what you've experienced, what previous experience you have that you think has prepared you for working on the City Commission and serving our community?
Right. Like I said, president of the Frankfurt Striders, so I took that over, actually from Zach Moore, I took over the club, I want to say about eight years ago, and turned that into a nonprofit, and we hosted race series. And the whole goal is, you know, to promote health and wellness, and we're worried, you know, trying to keep our community healthy. And while hosting the races, we're also trying to raise money for other nonprofits. So, you know, I obviously care about my community, I'm bringing that to the table. I also was offered a position to be on the Walk-Bike Frankfurt Board, and their promotion of pedestrian safety just went hand in hand with what I did with the Frankfurt Striders. So, you know, I've been on multiple boards, I was on DFI for a couple of years right out of college, and that was a good experience as well. So I know that I can work well with others, respect others, listen to both sides of the conversation, and then ultimately it comes down to what the community wants and needs. So I feel like I can be that level-headed voice for the commission, so.
Okay. Well, since we last spoke, the City Commission has fired our city manager Keith Parker. So my question is, just in general, why do you think Frankfurt can't keep a city manager on a long-term basis?
You know, I will say that I was surprised by the dismissal of Keith, but not shocked by it. The history is there, the past four years, the position has had big turnover. So I think it comes down to having our commissioners and mayor realize their role. You know, we are a city manager form of government. That sort of shakeup right now during a pandemic, losing our city manager, is a really big deal. So it does leave our city feeling sort of rattled, the confidence in our elected officials is maybe not there right now. You know, I think we're going to have a big change coming up through this election, obviously, a new mayor and potentially two new city commissioners. And I think we'll see a positive change, because we have a lot of really good options, people that will be able to respect staff and work well with staff. So there's been some discussion on, you know, do we have the right form of city government? And I think we do. I think the city manager form of government can work and should work, it's just having everyone realize their roles, you know, you have to be able to work together. And Keith Parker was running our city, he was keeping operations running smoothly. And, you know, we really, we may never know why he was actually fired, and that just leaves us with a bad taste in our mouth. So I would like to be a part of that change, where hopefully I will be able to help hire the next city manager, and just keep things running smoothly, so.
What should the City Commission look for in a new city manager?
You know, we need someone that's going to be able to look at the broad picture. I think Keith was doing a great job. I've actually, I've talked to a lot of city staff, I've talked to a lot of people in the community, that thought he really was doing an amazing job. I have not heard one negative comment. So I would say, let's look at what Keith was doing, and how well he was doing it, and maybe we need to find somebody like him. And he was local, which was a really good thing, because he already had existing relationships with people in the city and county. But, you know, Cindy Steinhauser brought a really interesting vision with her, because she came from out of state. So I think we have to, you know, really vet the candidates well, they're going to know the history of Frankfurt, so honestly, I don't know who would sign up for the job. You know, we're going to be sitting in a really interesting spot, and we may not have all the options we want, but we're going to have to just see what, who applies, and where to go from there. So it's going to be, it might be a long process, and hopefully we get a great candidate.
Well, as you said before, this has been a troubling issue for many in the community. So if elected, what would you suggest the City Commission do to boost public confidence in government?
You know, for years, we just have not promoted our city well. And I hate to, I hate to see that, because I love Frankfurt. I chose to move back here after college and invest in a home, and raise our family here. So I really think we have to look at our assets, you know, Frankfurt is a special place, and we just have to focus on that, focus on the positives, and do what we can to take care of our community, because if we can, you know, keep everyone happy with our parks, with our neighborhoods, good jobs, good schools, then we can attract more people and just keep Frankfurt moving and growing and progressing. So I think it's focusing on what is good, what is positive, and just continuing to grow.
Okay. We're going to move on to our next subject, which is COVID. Obviously, it's affecting our community, we have more than 500 positive cases in Franklin County now, and 14 virus-related deaths. Do you feel like city leadership has taken an effectively aggressive role in helping our community slow the spread? And what more can they do?
I think that they're probably doing what they need to, for the most part. You know, we're getting really good weekly updates, I hope everyone's watching those on Facebook. And the communication is out there, as far as, you know, the Health Department's doing a great job with testing. Right now, this month, they're testing every Tuesday, which is great. The more testing, the better. You know, we've got to know if there's asymptomatic cases out there, so, you know, I think we're doing what we can. I would like to see more masks out and about, if we could somehow create a better and positive reinforcement to wear masks. You know, I step out my front door, and I'm right here at the Capitol downtown, and there's people all over that aren't wearing masks, like they probably should in big groups, so... But I think we're doing what we can, we're all sort of getting like a COVID exhaustion right now, we're at, I don't know, seven months into this? I don't even, sometimes I don't even know what day it is, but, yeah, we've just got to stay focused, we're not through this yet, so.
Well, beyond affecting our community's physical health, it's also affecting the mental health. The CDC indicates that younger adults, racial and ethnic minorities, essential workers, they're having experienced disproportionately worse mental health outcomes, increased substance abuse, and elevated suicidal ideation. What efforts can be taken at the local level to address these associated mental health?
I mean, we've really got to look at what brought that on for these certain groups in our community, you know? Are we taking care of them in the best ways we can? Look at neighborhoods and living conditions, and do we have all of the appropriate services with the city to reach out to these members in our community? I think that's something that we can focus on, you know, do we need to send out mailers? Are we reaching people online like we need to? Do we need to get them communicate through the mail? Do we need to actually get out on foot and talk to our community more? So there's definitely a need for that.
Okay. Well, four months ago, we discussed the looming economic crisis that would result from the pandemic. We're now seeing that negative impact, for example, our lower occupational taxes.
Right.
What ideas do you have that we could deal with this economic crisis here in Frankfurt?
You know, we've, well, I'm looking at one building from this window right here, and that's the Mayo Underwood Building, as well as, I've got Transportation right here and the State Office Building. And they're all sitting empty right now. I don't know what the right answer is on that, because I think that everything's going to change, I mean, more people are working from home, and it may be a while before we see these office buildings totally full again. You know, but, but the Mayo Underwood Building, honestly, I think they should be paying city taxes. I mean, why are they not? So there are going to be ways that we'll work through this, and I think we're just going to have to really look at our budget, be very diligent, and we may have to roll back certain things so that we can focus on others that are really needed, so the budget's going to be an issue moving forward.
For sure. Well, this summer, after the deaths of Breonna Taylor, our country saw a wave of calls for social justice. So my first thought on this subject is, do Black Lives Matter?
Yes ma'am, they do. They do.
Okay. So how do you feel the rates when it comes to effectively addressing social injustices, and how can we improve?
You know, I think that, yeah, we need to look at our police department. Are there certain things that social workers need to be doing, and not necessarily police How can we reach out to community members, making sure we are there for everyone in our community? So, yeah, I think that our city needs to focus on hiring more minorities, more Black people. As I've been out campaigning, you know, I'm talking to the community, and I'm like, we need Black representation too, we need Black city commissioners, we need more women, you know, we, I'm ready to see a change, and I do hope to be part of that positive change.
In the early summer, a group of young activists sponsored a march in support of the Black Lives Matter movement. What can city leaders do to encourage more young people to get more civically engaged?
Yeah, that was, that was an awesome march. It was really emotional to see everyone come together and be so supportive. And that happened, you know, right here on the doorstep. I think that we really need to start in schools, we need to really promote civic engagement in schools, we need to make sure we are registering our students to vote, and that they need to know how important it is, and you can make a change by voting. I talked to a man yesterday in Bell Point, who was in his 50s, and he said, "I've never voted, I've never voted." And I said, "Well, you can still register to vote, you have until October 5th, and this year, if you vote in this general election, you can make a change." So, I mean, what if we had reached out to him when he was younger and registered him to vote? Maybe he would have his whole life. So it's starting when they're young, like you said, and we've just got to tell people how important it is to be involved in your community and in city government. Local is so important. Often, we just look at national races and think, as important as they are, and who our president is, local is very important as well. And we need to keep people educated on what is going on, how our city is spending our tax dollars, and it all has to start at an early age, so that's something I'll promote as well.
Okay. Well, the mayor and City Commission have taken a hit lately, as folks are questioning their transparency on issues and processes. So as a commissioner, what would you do to ensure an improvement in transparency to your constituents?
Well, going into this, if and when I'm elected, we will probably still be having virtual commission meetings. So I want to make sure that everyone's aware that they can make public comments, those have to be submitted via email to Blair Hecker by 4:00 PM the day of the meeting. So I really want to promote that, you know, people need to be watching these meetings, and just staying active. So yes, I would promote that, I would, I want people to know what I would be doing as your city commissioner, and, you know, why is our city spending $5,000 a month right now on a PR company? And, you know, there's, there's just, you're right, there's a lot going on, and I hope to just bring a little bit of practicality to some of the decision-making at City Hall, so.
Okay. Well, TIF for a minute.
Okay.
You know, we have a big project downtown with Parcels B and C, and right now, we're at a point where we're discussing the tax increment financing, which is what TIF is. Can you explain first how that works, and kind of where the City Commission is right now, and if you were on the City Commission, if it's something you would support?
Okay, so there are a lot of changes in the TIF right now, I'm trying to stay up to date on what's going on. I did see the State Journal posted just yesterday the new updated TIF plan, for those that are interested, that's on the State Journal, you can actually download the TIF proposed plan with the new edition that's up on Broadway. So, you know, from what I understand, with the addition of the Broadway properties, the Blighted properties, that could potentially qualify the city for more state funds, so potentially save our city money, which is a good thing. So if we're going to get the TIF, I think, yes, we should add those additional properties, because it should help us out. But from what I also understand, Marty Johnson, the developer that purchased the parcels downtown, in that he has to build a parking garage for the hotel in the city. So anything beyond that is just additional. Doesn't receive a TIF, then he may not go forward with the rest of the project. So that does worry me. You know, what if we just end up with a parking garage, and then the space, and nothing else? So there is a public forum next week, I think it's Wednesday night, anyone can submit questions, comments, Chuck Knowles is the contact. I just think that this is a huge project, it could go really amazing for the city, we're talking, you know, good tax money for our school district. But I just think everyone needs to be involved and stay on top of what's going on. Just this weekend, we, I saw on the news where Paducah is also working on a TIF district, and issues are arising there, where the state maybe isn't going to put in as much funds as they need. So we could potentially end up in that same situation here. Also, I'm wondering if the state will even approve a TIF district during a pandemic? I mean, is that something that is even a possibility? So there is a lot going on with that, it could be a really great thing for us and for the city, or it could, not being so great. So let's just hope for the best, and move forward, and make the city better, let's fill that space with something really nice.
Good.
Yeah.
As funding has been reduced for Downtown Frankfurt, Inc., and KCDC, which is our Economic Development Group here in town, do you think this minimizes the effectiveness of their missions to attract and support businesses in Frankfurt? And what can the city do to support these agencies?
Right, yes, I definitely think DFI and KCDC need funds to promote our city. And I would think that's something that we could find in our budget, you know? Like I said earlier, we're spending $5,000 a month on a PR company that hadn't done a whole lot of work for us until this month. So that's $5,000 a month that could have been going to other groups, like DFI or KCDC. And they are actually supposed to help bring business and promote our city. So I would like to see just the positive outlook of Frankfurt get better and change, and to see that promotion from both DFI and KCDC. But yeah, we've got to fund them in order for them to help us, so.
If elected, how would you involve business leaders in board appointments and other decision-making processes in our community?
Sorry, I'm just the beginning of that sentence.
Yeah. If elected, how would you involve business leaders in board appointments and other decision-making processes in our community?
You know, I guess I would look at the board and see, you know, what's needed, you know, what, who's already on the board, who do they represent, are all portions of the community being represented? And then who could be a positive voice on that board? So it would just come down to what's needed, and what position needs to be filled for that board, so.
What can city leadership do to foster a more partnering relationship with Kentucky State University?
You know, I feel like it's something that we're working on, but we can always be better about. We have some really good local groups, Together Frankfurt, and I've been invited to do a few activities where, you know, community partners with students for different events, and then COVID happens. So hopefully, moving forward, we can continue to grow that relationship. We're very lucky to have K-State in town, but unlike some other cities with universities, we don't really have that like college feel or university feel in our city, so I would like to see more students around. I know that, I'm not sure of the amount of students living at the Capitol Plaza right now, but it's really great to go on a walk at night and then see students out hanging out downtown, because they're actually living down at Capitol Plaza right now. So a little bit more incorporation of, you know, bringing students downtown, getting them to enjoy the city. I think Frankfurt's really special, and I'd like to just see that move forward as a, you know, a positive relationship. And I think the city could work on possibly like more internship programs, I know the police department has a program right now with K-State, but across the board, you know, do we need, are there students that want to work in city government? Well, maybe we can work something out and do some other internships, so totally open to that idea, I think it'd be great.
Well, in 2021, Frankfurt will have a new mayor, a new city manager, maybe?
Yeah.
...commissioners, a new Chamber of Commerce director, and a new director at DFI. So these are big changes, considering the gravity of local projects that are underway, and coming out of what's been a challenging year. So what do you see as the challenges and opportunities that these changes provide?
As far as challenges, you know, finding the right person for every one of those positions. You know, I really, I really hope people are listening to these interviews, are educating themselves on the candidates, because we have some really good options for both mayor and city commission. So, you know, we can vote on our elected officials, so I really hope that people do stay educated. Now, as far as appointments for DFI and the others that you mentioned, you know, I just, I hope that, I hope that people really think about what that person brings to the table, and what they can do for the organization, and will that be good for the city? So, yeah, we've got a lot of change, and I just hope it all goes smoothly, and I'm ready to be a part of it, so.
Well, at that, I'm going to turn it over to you, and let you close us out by talking about why you think you're the best candidate, what goals you're going to champion during your term, and why they should vote for you. So take it away.
Well, like we were just talking about, this election for Frankfurt, we have the opportunity to make a very positive change in our city leadership, and I do want to be a part of that change. So like I said earlier, I decided to run for office, because I felt like the current elected officials just weren't representing me. And viewing city commission meetings really turned into a regular thing in my house, just so I could keep up with what the commission was doing with my tax dollars. So, you know, while campaigning, it became clear to me that many members of the community feel the same way as me. And, you know, for example, Dolly Grand Park in South Frankfurt, back in 1999, the park was supposed to be fully renovated, and they basically only received a new playground. So the community has been waiting since then, and they felt very neglected. And I'm also tired of waiting for certain things. So as your commissioner, I will listen to you, I'll bring your concerns to the table, and I will fight for results. So I promise transparency, compassion, and practicality in my decision-making, and I will be a city commissioner that you can be proud of. And I will be a city commissioner that you can be proud of. So mask up, wash your hands, and don't forget to vote for Lisa Unger, number six on the ballot. And please vote for me. I'm a new trustworthy voice for you and your family this fall. So thank you so much, Kathy.
Sure. How can people learn more about you? Do you have social media?
Sure do, sure do, yeah. Lisa Unger for Frankfurt City Commission on Facebook. I'm very active on Facebook. You can message me anytime, ask me questions. And then I do have a website with some good information as well. So that's lisaforcitycommission.com.
Thank you so much for your time today. I know our viewers appreciate hearing from you. And to our viewers, I want to say thanks for watching because it's so important to get informed and then go out and voice your choice. And you can do that anytime, starting October 13th up until Election Day on November 3rd. So thank you again. And we'll see you next time on Meet the Candidates.